Welcome to the February 15th meeting of the planning board. First, we'll take a roll call.
We'll take a roll call.
It's Board members and staff.
Board members and staff.
I'm hearing an echo. Is that me or someone else?
Someone else.
Anyway, uh, we are currently missing, uh, Tom McCusker, but he will be here shortly. Uh, if you could just raise your hand when I say your name, uh, Dave.
Here.
Ellen. Kate.
Here, not able to read skin, sorry.
And I'm Chris, and Tom will be by shortly. Meeting was recorded by Westwood Media Center and broadcast live on, uh, local cable television Comcast Channel 11 and Verizon Channel 42. Meetings are also live on the Westwood Media Center's YouTube channel. If you're having any trouble logging into Zoom, please go to zoom.us and click on join meeting and enter the meeting ID 88535918934. We will begin the meeting with only the board members and staff unmuted and on video. As the chair recognizes individuals to speak, we will unmute them. Board members may choose to mute themselves when they're not speaking in order to minimize background noise. For applications, the chair will first invite the applicant to address the board and give a presentation summarizing what is being requested. Board members receive the application materials prior to the meeting and will have reviewed them. Board members may ask questions during and following the presentation. Staff and outside experts will provide comments to the board. If the issue includes a public hearing, the board will then proceed to the public comment portion of the public hearing and will restate the instructions. In this remote meeting format, residents and guests may participate in several ways. Attendees should raise their hand and wait to be unmuted and recognized to speak over the Zoom meeting application or from a telephone dial-up. We will be able to hear you but not see you. Additionally, comments may be submitted by email or regular mail prior to the meeting. When we come to that part of the meeting, I will, I will remind everyone of the process. Following the public comment portion, the board will deliberate and make a decision or continue the hearing to a specific future date. All remote meetings require that votes be taken by roll call. When a motion and a second has been made, the chair will ask if there's any further discussion before proceeding to a roll call vote, and then we'll restate the results of the vote. Abby, do we have any changes to tonight's agenda?
Yes, we have, um, one change. I had put on the agenda, um, item number two under other business as a discussion item. I had put on, um, 298 Washington Street. Um, that's one of the, um, bases of the, the mixed use, um, building of the Islington, um, center redevelopment project. There was a request to relocate, um, the location for the trash and recycling, um, and change it from a dumpster compactor. However, that request has now been, um, withdrawn. So we don't need to, we won't discuss that anymore. It's going to stay as it was approved, um, adjacent to the building.
Okay, so we will start as we were intended. That was article or item number three, uh, number one. Article three, section one. Uh, so we'll go back to public hearings and that will begin our night talking about the zoning amendments.
Alright, so, um, from your last, your last meeting on February 1st, you opened your public hearing on all the zoning amendment articles. You have sponsored six zoning articles, um, that you put placed on the warrant at the last meeting. You continued your hearing till tonight. I had in your packet, um, an updated version. Um, there's only very minor changes that came out of last, of your hearing from last time. If you wanna, um, you know, if you have any other changes tonight that you'd like to further think about, um, you can make those changes tonight. Usually tonight you make your recommendation to the FinCom, the Finance and Warrant Commission. They will open their public hearing on Tuesday, February, I'm sorry, Tuesday, March 1st. So you'll, um, you make your recommendation tonight to FinCom. Um, and then you should also continue your public hearing to the same time, Tuesday, March 1st at 6:00 PM. So that way, um, you'll present to the FinCom, you'll take in any comments that you get at that meeting. Um, that way, if there's any other changes, you can also consider, consider that, any revisions at that time at one of your upcoming meetings in March. Um, so for tonight in your packet, the revised, um, zoning amendment articles. For the first article, um, we, the only update, this is the, um, mixed use and multifamily article. The only changes that were made, um, was that staff, I took another look at the institutional use definition. We wanted to make sure we had that very clearly in the, um, zoning bylaw to match all other sections of the zoning bylaw. Um, so that definition focuses on, um, government uses, you know, public uses, religious child and childcare and educational uses. So it's essentially the protected uses. It was listed in the allowable uses in this new zoning district. So that's the only change in article one. For article two, the solar, um, article, we had, um, added language to clarify that the O and M plan, the operation and maintenance plan that is only required for the large scale solar projects that come to the planning board. So that would be only when they come to the public hearing with the planning board. The third art article, that was the, um, proposal for the, um, local business day and the flexible multiple use on the high street properties associated with the Obed Baker House. The, um, a change since your last hearing was to, um, add the animal clinic and hospital use, animal clinic use to the list of allowed uses. Um, took another look at that and realized that use wasn't in there. That is the veterinarian use that is proposed as part of the, um, that project. Um, that project proposes use restoring, renovating the Obed Baker House and then proposing a new building for the animal, the animal clinic, the, um, veterinarian office. Um, the fourth article, I, we didn't have any changes. Or to the fifth, the only other change was to housekeeping. Uh, we noticed in one of the definitions, um, section for our personal kennel references a state department, but it wasn't clear what department. So we added that department and it was the Department of Agriculture. So otherwise, um, in your packet, I could pull up the zoning if you have any questions or if you want to go over anything again. Um, the changes were shown in the blue font in your packet, and if you have any questions, we can go through it tonight.
Alright, thank you. Um, so, and you're expecting a vote on each of these for our recommendation to FinCom, right? Just to make sure the procedure here. So article one, um, will open up to board members for any comments on, uh, what Abby described, any, uh, the changes made. Any other thoughts you may have had over the last couple of weeks? Okay. Uh, should we open up each as we go to public comment, Abby?
Sure, that would be good if anyone has any questions. Um, I know we didn't go through the whole presentation again, but if anyone's thought of anything since the last meeting.
Okay, and we're talking about article one, the multifamily. I forget the acronym you've given, but, uh, is it maybe, what is it? What is the?
Um, we're following the mixed use and multifamily overlay district.
Okay, it's a mouthful. Uh, I see one hand raised and that's by Mr. Olenoff. Hello, Steve, can you state your name and address, please? You're muted currently.
I'm muted. Okay, Steve Olenoff, 52 Glendore Road, uh, and, uh, associate member of the, uh, planning board. Uh, so I was looking at different things in this, uh, article, uh, and, and I think the first and the biggest thing is where you're, where you're putting these and, uh, example, in section 9.9.2, you list the parcels. Uh, we usually don't do that, um, in, in the zoning bylaw. Usually define a zoning area as bounded by, you know, this road, that road, this highway, uh, railroad tracks, that kind of thing. You don't put out parcels. I notice the, the only other places in the, uh, zoning bylaw where that's done is for, where it has to be done is for the wireless districts because they are physically allowed parcel by parcel. Everything else except for when done, done, the one done last year, uh, for the, uh, uh, substance abuse area did stray from the, from the way normally is listing individual parcels. Usually you just put it on the map and you refer to the map and say, you know, and just, uh, uh, give a general area where it is. So I, I think you should stick to that, but the, the real big problem is, is you're doing it parcels rather than zones. I mean, this is zoning and you list a zone, not in a parcel here, a parcel there. You're, you're, you're putting this out two, two parcels which are right near each other but not even connected. And the whole idea is to have it within proximity to the railroad station. Yet there's everything between those parcels and the railroad station is not included. So I, I want to stress that, that this article is not as big deal as, as people are making it out to be. I think we can easily get the, well, either the 50 or the, what, 77 acres that is required. It's very easy to get it down there at University Avenue where you've, uh, where these two parcels that you've already specified exist. So, and I've attended, I've read the, the state law and I've attended, uh, various webinars on this. And they are stressing that, number one, uh, no units actually have to require it to be built. You just have to put up the zoning which says that this is an as a right thing. And that it needs to be in the proximity to a, you know, a railroad station. And they also said, don't include the station itself when you start including the zone. So we should just start the zone at, um, uh, Greenard Street and Blue Hill Drive and just draw a line parallel, move it down so that the east boundary would be the railroad tracks. The west boundary would be the current boundaries of university, uh, development. And, and just move that down until you get to 50 or, or the 77 acres, what, whatever you think is needed. Uh, 50, you reach 50 acres by the time you get to somewhere in the middle of the, uh, of the water. Uh, uh, the apartment, uh, the water treatment plant. Uh, you, if you, you went a little bit ways to the edge of, uh, the southern edge of, of the property and maybe extended a little bit more, uh, where it is now, you could easily get to 77 acres just in University Avenue Development. And the thing about that development is it's all under a, uh, development agreement with the select board. So even though the zoning says that it's as a right, in fact, nothing could be done without agreement of the select board. So it's, it's not a really difficult, uh, uh, provision to meet the, the acre requirement. And I think we should do that, and I think in keeping with the, uh, the spirit of this, we should, we should just provide a large zone which, which has those 50 acres. Uh, that's my major, uh, objection to what you have here. I think, I think the, the planning board was just off track when it, when it started looking at a parcel here and a parcel there and doing things by deposit. You, you'll, you'll probably hear, and I've heard this before, uh, the word, uh, spot zoning. I don't know if that term really exists, uh, officially in, in, uh, in the zoning, in, you know, planning world, but I've heard it at, uh, FinCom meetings. Uh, and certainly they would apply it here and anyone would apply it here as you have a parcel, the one here, here and a parcel next door and they aren't even connected and they aren't connected to the, to the railroad station. So that's my comment on that. I have more individual comments, uh, on different parts of it. Uh, not a few little typos and things. Section 9.9.3, like the third line down, it says, set forth in section 9.8.5. That should be section 9.9.5. Uh, in section 9.9.12.8, uh, I'm scrolling down to it. That's the ways down. You refer to, uh, I'm still finding it. Oh, we talk about, uh, an electronic data submission of the materials, the materials with the possibly as board shall be submitted at the time of the application filing in a physical material board. We haven't used that material, term material board before, but you should be consistent. Either is it a material board or a materials board? Uh, it's one or the other. Probably you should say data, digital submission of a material board should be submitted in a physical material board. Make it consistent. Minor corrections there. Uh, I noticed in, I don't know if it's, all of these, uh, features that you have down there under, uh, building and design standards, they're really the same things repeated over again from section, uh, 7.3.8. And it's always, rather than repeating things, uh, maybe you stray in one thing and you already say it might be applicable to the, the section 7.3 anyway. If you can get away without repeating all that and just, I think the only thing different was the advertising features. And just say, you know, you meet the requirements there. If you look down there, copying all that over it, it mentions, uh, again, I'm scrolling. Uh, it mentions that, where is that, Washington Street? Uh, exceptions which, which are in 7.3, but the zoning, uh, the, the zoning that you set up doesn't include Washington Street anyway. So that just, that's just really out of place. So, uh, either, either take that one out. You may want it in the future. I would, I recommend that this area be include, uh, Washington Street where it's really needed. But you're not doing it at this time. Uh, but I think, uh, you should be aware that copying everything over from 7.3.8, you just, you have that Washington Street in there. I think that's about it.
Alright, thank you. Any board members wish to comment, um, respond to Mr. Olenoff's comments? Yes, Ellen?
One thing, one aspect of that, I intend, um, see exactly where you're coming from is we just do a zone university in theory, and I think Chris suggested that before. But part of the legislation that I think would be risk if we gloss over is that compliance conditional. And this is actually, uh, one of the part of us saying to later conversation about feedback that stayed is to me, there's a major disconnect between the part of the guidelines that say not expected to produce anything, you just have to zone for it, and the paraffin conditional client which says your compliance is good for decades and we're going to evaluate and see what's developed. And if not got built, we may rule your compliance. So until the state kind of clarified that, it should be that, you know, one hand saying X, the other hand saying Y. So I think part of the reason we we're kind of waiting on the saying, sure, let's zone everything is, you know, there, there's still some uncertainty as to if that 50 acre may become less depending on community feedback during the common period. But I think that the notion that if we think about this as whatever we do, even if we achieve compliance, it's only going to be good for 10 years. And they then turn around and say, you zone 50 acres in this huge area of nothing to build where we're putting your compliance. I'm not sure that's exactly what we want to be doing either. So I, I, I think we, uh, and that maybe that will change based on community feedback. It's individual or maybe, you know, altered rules. But for me, that's been informing my thinking when I approach these conversations is yeah, they say not expected to produce anything, no, it's not the same with the 4D legislation. But they're kind of saying they do want us to have something occur as a result of this as well. So given the dichotomy there. So I, I think for me, that's why I've been hesitant to kind of go all out and say, sure, let's zone however many acres, you know, let's go to maximum today, even if it's got changed, doesn't matter. I, I think it could matter. Um, and that, that's just, you know, has been informing my thinking when we talk about should be more than we have already kind of.
Thank you.
I had trouble hearing that.
Yeah, I, Ellen, I was gonna say, uh, I'm having a hard time hearing. I think your microphone or something is happening with your mic or your, your, it sounds almost like you're underwater.
So Chris, I had one more thing I must have skipped, uh, if we could do that. On dimension requirements in section 9.9.7, you laid out a whole of, array of, of new, uh, dimensional requirements. And, you know, particularly the maximum building height, 45 feet. That would be fine for, again, these parcels that you picked out. But in general, in other words, if this ended, would it be extended to areas like Washington Street where actually we could use something like this in that area from, uh, the side of the street signing of Roach Brothers going down to Clapatree Street where we really need some, uh, development needs to be encouraged. Uh, then it simply wouldn't fit into these, uh, requirements. So if you ever wanted to expand that, you'd have to be looking at all these project side, you know, lot, lot area, project area, lot area, and particularly their height, uh, which would vary in some areas. So I think just sticking with the underlying zoning should be fine. I don't think, uh, you, you really would need to deviate from the, uh, from the underlying zoning. Uh, unless, unless you can find some really specific cases. Uh, and again, it gets away, you're getting away from the, from the whole idea of this as of right. When you start, uh, making all these new dimensional requirements, it's, it's, and it doesn't agree with the underlying zoning. You, you, you sort of, I think you're defeating the, the whole underlying principle of this as a right, uh, zoning.
Okay, Abby, are the height differences that we've outlined different? Let's say at, uh, the Everett Street location?
Um, I had tried to use the, the underlying zoning district as a, as a base. Um, so I can, we have listed in this chart is, um, 45 feet as the maximum height. Um, let me just check the underlying zoning.
Yeah, I think you'd be much better off going the underlying zoning because in some cases it might be lower, some cases it might be higher. And, uh, you know, why would you differ from what you've originally put in the underlying zoning? Particularly when it's supposed to be, again, as of right. Generally speaking, when you, when you start changing the height and wanting greater heights of whatever, that's usually a special permit process. I think you want to stick to, to the as a right process here, which is, which would be the underlying zoning.
Um, in the underlying zoning, we have, um, 39 feet and we have 45, um, feet um, for the highway business and the ARO. I think when we, when we first drafted this, you know, we drafted it with looking at multiple locations. So that's why we had come up with a little chart because we were looking at considering multiple properties at that time. Um, so that's why we had, um, as Steve had pointed out, we had copied from our EIDR, Environmental Impact Design Review, there is a standard language about, um, buildings being compatible with buildings on High Street and Washington Street. Um, when we first drafted this, we thought Washington Street, some areas of Washington Street was a possibility. So that's how that section got in there. Um, and that's why we came up with a chart, um, of the heights and frontages because we thought it may be more than just the one site, but.
So what is the underlying zoning height requirement or maximum in the Everett Street area?
It says 39 feet by right and 45 feet by special permit in the highway business zone.
And what we've included in our verbiage for this article is 45 feet?
Uh, yes, 45 feet.
Okay. Uh, I remember discussion about that, but I don't remember the fine points of our talk of how we derived at 45 feet. Do you, can you remind me? Does anyone have minutes from that day that might remind us? Or do you remember?
I think that was about, that would be about four stories of a, of a building.
Yeah, 45, generally 10 feet per story, give or take. Um, and well, 39 is too short? Is that what we were surmising?
I think it was, um, I think when we were thinking about the, um, Everett Street location in particular, weren't we realizing that if you, if it was limited to three stories, yeah, you wouldn't, it would not work. Like it just, it wouldn't be possible to have, uh, uh, to meet the density, um, requirement or something. I think that, like, having these limits in here, um, I think it's, it's helpful to make the zoning expensible, you know, like, I, I also, like, I understand where Mr. Olenoff is coming from with the, um, we ended up with, you know, very specific parcels. And I think part of that is that we should be very specific. You know, people want to know what's, where is this zone going to be? So, you know, I think it's not bad to list those out. You know, and if it, if it needs to be changed in the future, then I think it's good to have the, the things that we are allowed to limit to be a part of the zoning itself. Right? So like, if you suddenly had to change it to be a broader area, um, I think we came up with these requirements and all to be true for any multifamily building, you know, so I think you, it, it, it kind of fits with like generally why I support what we're doing here. It's not perfect. It maybe it's not, um, the ideal thing in terms of, uh, what someone who wants to have a big housing impact would, would argue for, but it provides the framework so that, um, you know, if we do, if we get feedback that says you've got to make it larger and we have, we have all the pieces in place to do that, to add more properties to this or to, you know, to change the zone to, you know, if, if we agree on the basic framework, but if we sort of go into more, we say let the underlying zoning determine that, then we're kind of open to every time you expand it, you're going to like consider, well, what's the impact that, that going to be? Like what is the underlying zoning if we extend it into a little bit more? So I just think again, or back to the idea that it's not a perfect, um, proposal, but it's, um, it's something we can work with and, um, take it to town meeting and give people a, a choice on this. Um, I don't think we're going to get too far if we feel that we have to expand the proposal a lot beyond this. Unless we're told, unless it comes out, you know, they say that, uh, here are the consequences, um, you know, if in April or May or something, we get feedback or after that, then, um, you know, we're in a better place having worked it out this way than we would be if we kind of just redid everything or something.
Uh, I think you should notice here that, I mean, the merits of 35 feet versus, uh, or 36 feet versus 45 feet on that Everett Street parcel, that, you know, that may be a whole discussion in itself and, and maybe it would be better. But you're sort of getting a backdoor approach here to raising it from 36 feet to 45 in, in a zoning bylaw which is supposed to be an as a right thing, which is a little strange, uh, way of doing it. Uh, maybe, maybe if you wanted 45 feet there, you should at the same time raise the, the height area in there to 45 feet. But then again, you've got, you know, if that's the, uh, the highway business district, then you have to consider, you know, you want it in that entire highway business district or, or just there. But again, and, and a as a right thing, you are raising it from 36 feet to 45 feet in an as of right kind of, uh, uh, in an as of right, uh, zone, in the zone, so.
Steve, it is, it's a different building being constructed under different, uh, guidelines for density. Uh, so what we were saying was in order to accommodate that and, and achieve what we're being asked to achieve, we thought a full four stories was what we're being asked to achieve, we thought a full four stories was the right way to go for this particular location. So it's the, I think, the different density expectation at this location, why we added the six feet from thirty nine to forty five.
Yeah, that makes sense. But I'm just, but you're, you're locking yourself in here and again to, that if you want to add additional areas on somewhere else, then it might, that forty five feet may not be appropriate. Particularly if you put it along Washington Street, it definitely wouldn't be appropriate.
No, it, it might not. You might have more, more land acreage where you don't need to achieve four, four floors. You might be able to achieve your density in something less. So it's, no, I think this is prescription based. It's, it is for this specific location, forty five feet. And what did we do down at the University Ave, Abby? How, what's the height on that? Is it also forty something or is it based on?
Right now, it's all written to be the forty five in your proposed zoning. But I think you talked about if you were going to expand the district to other areas, then you would consider having different height limits. For example, you had talked about other locations and you would separate, oh, you know, take a look at the height depending on where it was. But for right now, the zoning has the forty five height for, for all the parcels that you propose then, which is the two at University Station and the Everett Street parcel only.
Yeah, so I'm just really pointing out that the way you have it now, if you wanted to expand this to other areas, you'd have to, you'd have to change the dimensions there to suit where those other areas would be. And because this is not a one size fits situation.
No, you're, you're right. Any other comments from board members? Yes, Kate.
Steve, thank you so much for, for taking such a strong look at this. I really appreciate that. I, I do just want to say, in thinking about this, and I appreciated Ellen's comments underwater as they were, I did, I did get the gist of them and I appreciate them. You know, we each, we're coming at this requirement through our own lenses. And I was really having an eye towards combining the request, you know, the, not request, the, the, the new law with what's in our comprehensive plan, what the, the town has told us that they want with more types of housing, walking distance in our town centers specifically. My thought is Islington because it's, it has a T station and it's, it's, it's covered by this law. So more so than, than University Station, which we hadn't yet considered a town center. So, so my thinking was put the housing where we have been asked by the town and where we have been asked, told by the state that it must go. And, and all of the, the, your thoughtful comments tell me that we should not, that we should go small and measured and, and be very thoughtful as we make these changes. So I appreciate your initial idea of putting it all down at University Station and just knocking it out at one time. But that, that might not be our best approach here. So again, thank you very much for, for, for taking a good look at it. But I'm, I'm pretty happy with, with what we're proposing.
Yeah, so I, I, yeah, I didn't mean we should only do it at University Station. What I was saying was, at University Station, we can totally meet the requirements of the law. I'm definitely in favor of doing it at the, on Everett Street. And I also think you should really consider, and it was good, this was a good opportunity, but it's a little too late now to do it on Washington Street between Roach Brothers and, and Clap Tree Street, where it's really, really needed for redevelopment and those, and those much smaller parcels. Where, where, where the, where the plan board has, has had so much trouble getting anything done. You've gone through EIDRs for properties and approved them, and then it didn't get built. And so the properties are still standing vacant. So if it could be extended in the future to that area, and, and I think that's, that's what really needs to be done and for, to continue all the great improvements that have been done in, in Islington, to go down the street to where the Islington Center is not really working out very well right now with those vacant buildings and, and, and get something as a right like this with the incentives for mixed use rather than just straight as a right dwelling units. Then I think that's something that you'd want to do. And I'm just pointing out that, that this table restricts you to that and you would have to come up with, you know, a different set of dimensions for, for the, for the Washington Street area.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments from board members? Okay, we do have something typed in the Q and A, and it's from Debbie Conant. Looks like she submitted one statement a couple of times, so I'll read through this until I'm through. "In reference to the recent zoning, it seems presumptuous to move forward so swiftly when the requirements are still fluid, such as the addition of the adjacent towns of MBTA communities now placed in the same position, albeit with less acreage required. I've spoken to some neighboring towns who have not yet zoned and are just now beginning to look into it more formally. They have agreed that there is a, there are a great deal of disadvantages to municipalities in regards to schools, infrastructure, traffic, quality of life, police and fire, et cetera. Everyone agrees that there's a need for housing, but towns feel the requirements are too aggressive and short sighted in regards to the detrimental effects to the town, especially with the amount of acreage they are requiring. Has the town planner and economic developer reached out to neighboring towns to inquire their ins, inquire their insights on this new zoning requirement? Are they aware that other towns are seeking outside help with the zoning if they feel they wish to proceed?" With, and then she must have hit enter, and the next one, "It may behoove the town to resist the urge to zone blindfolded until the actual zoning requirement is more thoroughly discussed and solidified at the state level." And I believe, yes, I believe that's everything she typed. So Abby, I think I asked you a question, or Nora?
Yep, I'd be, be happy to answer that. So I'll begin by saying, I've never felt the urge to zone, so I don't know if the other planning board members have and have needed to resist it, but that's not a thing. What I will say is that, of course, we have spoken to representatives of various towns. Everyone is in the same boat as far as what we have in legislation and what we have in temporary influx guidelines. We are working under the assumption that the best thing to do for Westwood, and Westwood is our only concern now, each town is different, each town will take the approach that's best for them. But we believe for Westwood, the best approach is to address the law as written and to provide a zone that we can defend as a zone that meets the minimum standards that we believe is a reasonable sized zone appropriate for our particular town. That would be in compliance with the law, the actual text of the law. And that's what we are writing this bylaw to, to go towards addressing the law as written. The guidelines are still in flux and we will make comments with our concerns over the guidelines. I believe the planning board will do the same and so will the select board. That doesn't mean we should stop and wait. We believe that we should zone in a manner that's appropriate for Westwood. And I think that's exactly what the planning board is doing here. So every town will act as it sees fit. And in this case, it's your job to determine what's appropriate for Westwood, and I think you're doing just that.
All right, thank you. Any other comments from board members, response to the comments by Ms. Conant?
Just thank you for sharing your thoughts on it.
Yes, Ellen.
Sorry, that reminded me, I know there was some conversation at our last meeting too. There were some comments about concerns about stressing the water and sewer and other resources. And I know that the discussion from our perspective had kind of centered around, we're not looking at a specific project. But I actually went back to the guidelines and the guidelines did say that for any zone that a planning board or municipality is looking to zone, sorry, can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Okay, good, I switched my microphone. So that for any area of town that a municipality is considering applying this zoning to, that we as a community, and I'm not sure whether it's us or someone else needs to advise us, we should be considering whether or not the area we're looking to zone, whether our current infrastructure, as far as water and sewer goes, can support the proposed density that we would be zoning for. So I know, like, that's been in the back of my mind, but we haven't, as a board, really formally looked at that. Just something I think for us to keep in mind, I don't know if, if, you know, Westwood, Dead and Water and/or our sewer department could kind of weigh in on that, but it was advised in the guidelines. So I, I actually appreciated those comments both this week and last week. It's, it spurred me to go back and look at the guidelines. And that is something that the state is recommending we do to guide us as we move forward with whatever and wherever we zone. So I, I don't think it's necessarily out of scope for us as a board to at least keep that in mind when we're proceeding with, you know, whatever we decide to do now and or in the future with what we zone for by right multifamily.
Right, so we, we talked about this, Mr. Chairman, if, if I will, a little bit while you were looking at parcels, maybe in the late fall, early winter. And you were focused on, you know, this area on Everett Street and University Station are areas that are developed. We do have, you know, sewer and, and water and, and the streets and at these properties. So the next stage would be if a project were to come forward, that specific project would propose changes and an application would come in to you, to the planning board. When we receive the application, it's distributed to the water district or, you know, engineering and public works department. And they provide comments, also the sewer commission. So they, they will also review the plans at that time and they make recommendations. So that any upgrades that are needed are part of the, the project. So the project that's proposed, the applicant is responsible for performing those, those upgrades.
Yes, Ellen.
Just, just for, so I understand this is probably an obvious question and the answer is probably obvious, but would that apply to buy right projects as well as obviously the special permits and stuff? But we're talking about buy rights, so that's, that's just, it would apply to buy right projects as well?
Yes, I mean, their project still needs to be functioning. We can't require, we have buy right approvals, we have limited requirements for any offsite, unrelated improvements, but for onsite, their project still needs to function and, and get through their permits with sewer and the water district. They still need those permits.
Okay, so if a project came in that was, you know, larger scale within the density, you know, by right, if they put in, say, a hundred and fifty units somewhere, they would still have to deal with providing those upgrades? It would not come at town expense, it would be at the applicant's expense even for a buy right project?
Yes.
Okay, because I think that's what I'm hearing is some of the concern from residences. Would that cost be filtered back to the rest of the town if improvements had to be made? I think if we know that it would go to the applicant regardless of whether it's a special permit or buy right, I think that's, that's helpful. Thank you.
There was, it was pointed out to me that there was a section of the comments by Ms. Conant that I missed. Her statement is, are, are they aware, I'll read back, has the planning board, I'm sorry, town planner and economic developer reached out to neighboring towns? I did say that. And then she said, are they aware that other towns are seeking outside help with the zoning if they feel they wish to proceed with the zoning? And many are considering foregoing the grants, feeling that the monetary baiting is not worth the strict requirements set forth at this time. Please provide an answer to this question.
So I think that, I think we did address that, or I attempted to address it by saying that every town will do what it feels is best for that town. Westwood is looking at this from its own perspective and what's best for Westwood. And I don't think it's, I think the grants are part of it, but more significant is compliance with the law and the concerns over what could happen if we fail to comply with the law, well beyond the potential loss of grant money.
Right, thank you, Nora. All right, I don't see any other questions in the Q and A. I don't see any other hands raised. Are there any other comments planning board members would like to make for the first article, the multifamily? Okay, seeing none and no more questions in the Q and A, we'll move on to Article Two. Abby, could you read us? What article or?
Article, Article Two is the solar for the, the permitting for the solar arrays. The only change since your last hearing was, we just sort of took another look and strengthening. We strengthened, you know, clarified the zoning in a couple of small spots. And we have added that the operation and maintenance plan is only required for the projects that come to the planning board. You did receive some questions from the members of the Finance and Warrant Commission with some questions related to the solar that we can be ready for at your next public hearing when you meet with them. They were asking, there was a question about asking how many solar applications the town has received. We've, we've only received four requests for applications for the, the solar not mounted on structures. Two have been approved, that's one on Sandy Valley Road at a residential property and the one at EverSource, that's the four canopies over the parking spaces in the, in the parking lot on Station Drive at the top of the hill. And there was two more that were submitted to the zoning board that were ultimately withdrawn, they weren't approved. So since 2017, you've only received four applications. So the preference is always for mounting them on the roof. We don't have an exact number for the solar permit that we've received for on the roof or on structures, probably we have many of those in town. We see them more and more on the residential properties. They do, they're supposed to get, you know, building and electrical permits. And we've had several on commercial buildings, those do right now. And as proposed with the zoning bylaw, with this current draft, is an administrative EIDR review. So we have a few of the on roof ones at commercial buildings, for example, Target. The Target is the biggest one that we have in town and that's five hundred kilowatts. And it's about over, it's a little over twenty thousand square feet in size. And then the, the ground mounted ones, the residential ones that we've received, they're, they're usually between ten kilowatts and fifteen kilowatts and about eight hundred square feet. So in size, eight hundred square feet, that's about the size of a large in-ground pool. So that's what you see at a residential property. The ones on the commercial buildings are much la- larger on, on the roofs. And let's see, and then let me see if there's any other questions yet. The biggest one we got was the one at EverSource for the four canopy structures. And so as, as proposed, the, the roof or on the, the ones that are on structures would be an administrative EIDR process. But the, and the ones on the, and the one, the smaller solar arrays that are not mounted would also be an administrative EIDR, would be, sorry, an administrative EIDR process. The ones on the roof will go straight to building and electrical permits. And the only ones that would come to you, to the, the planning board would be the large scale ones proposed as principal uses in over ten thousand square feet. So you made that change by took, taking out the, the kilowatts at the last meeting and looked at the physical size of the space. You thought that was where the impact really was and that was the trigger to come to you for the review.
All right, thank you. Comments, questions by board members? Oh, incidentally, Mr. McCusker won't be joining us this evening. So any, sorry, I mean, you cut people off with that announcement. Planning board members, no comments or questions, all right? We do have one hand raised and it's Mr. Olunoff. You could state your name and address, please.
Steve Olunoff, fifty two Glendore Road. And I did mention that both of these articles are, were written, but if there's anything. Uh, but if there's anything little bit astray, I'll I'll usually find it. So on the definitions, uh, you have roof-mounted solar and things like that. You have you have uh, quotation marks around them. If you look at uh, the rest of our uh, definitions, we don't do that. There are a couple of places where we did that, but I think you don't need those uh, those uh, quotation marks. I think you just should be uh, kept consistent and 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 uh, not put them in there. Uh, the article itself is pretty well-written. There was a typo. Uh, let's see, seven point seven six. Uh. There was a greater. Yeah, uh, no component of a solar energy system shall be greater than two twenty feet or two there to be removed, do you? So that's a, so the one comment I have here is, one thing I haven't done is I've mentioned before a number of times, our zoning bylaws do not define the term carport. And because of that, I know the building inspector probably has trouble when someone wants to build a carport. But in this case, it could get more complicated because if someone wants to build a carport and have the roof of that carport as solar panels, it's not clear that it's ground-mounted solar or it's a carport where uh, it has solar panels on top of it, particularly when the solar panels really are the roof. So uh, I'd recommend you, I think you could put it in here without any problem that's even at this point, is just defining uh, what a carport is in your definition so that uh, it's clear that so anyone can go and and doesn't have a carport now, but they could put put a carport, which really would be solar panels on a couple of posts where cars parked underneath. That would, that would be uh, there'd be certainty that that is a carport, not a ground-mounted, so. And I actually think someone in town wants to do that, so it may, it'll be coming up.
Right, I I thought when we had looked at this, we um, we would consider the roof-mounted the definition, a a car, um, a solar that was proposed on on the carport would fall under that. That's why we had added the words. Um, we removed the word principal buildings and we had chosen um, roof or top of a structure.
Yeah, so someone has a carport that they've had and they want to put solar panels on top of it, I don't think that would be a problem. But if someone doesn't have a carport and builds a carport, which is essentially solar panels on a couple of posts and and that becomes, you know, their carport. The the the, there may be a question as to, is that a ground-mounted solar or is that a carport? And that's, so that's not where the fine.
Does that substantively change? If uh, I, i- if it's on a shed or the carport, are you, if they, I mean, if they go, I think the only thing is if they trigger a ten thousand square feet, right? So if they build something that resembles a carport, call it a carport, but it's not really, and it's more than ten thousand square feet, then it would trigger the it would cross that threshold for the next, the next level of uh, scrutiny. Um.
I I guess it, the carport is not defined. Be- because the carport is not defined in the zoning bylaw, then when someone constructs a carport, the building commission might have trouble saying, you know, what is that, you know, it? And and uh, and if they do it with a solar panels, it becomes more complicated. So that's why I thought that, you know, we, all these years, we we lacked the definition of a carport and now would be a good time to put it in.
So Abby, is there a a way we could put that in housekeeping, adding a a definition in the bylaws?
Yeah, or we.
Asking, and it not not be a part of this article, but just in general, identifying a carport, carport.
Yes, or I mean, or we could add it to the, to this section, if if that's a concern. I just haven't looked up language for a carport at this moment, moment in time, but um, when I did review this with the um, building commissioner and building inspector, we thought a carport would fit in this definition and it would be, you know, as proposed, it would fall under the roof-mounted structure. And unless it was over the ten thousand square feet, then it would be allowed with the um, building and electrical permits.
Okay, so I.
Yeah, the problem, the problem is someone could build a ground-mounted solar and uh, the only difference in appearance between that and and a carport with a solar roof on it is, is you know, is the size and whether you can actually fit a car under it and whether the driveway actually goes under it. So well, that's not, you know, the zoning bylaw should be just to be a little bit clearer about the whole thing.
Yes, Alan.
I guess I I understand what you're saying, Steve, and it might make sense to define what a carport is in general in another part of the bylaw, but I guess where I'm curious here is since part of the point of this is ground-mounted by right, as long as it's under a certain threshold. I am not trying to be flippant, but does it matter whether it's a carport or a ground-mounted installation in someone's yard, as long as it meets the building inspector's setbacks and or, you know, whatever's in our bylaws, the setbacks and um, higher requirements and and whatever else we've outlined, does it really matter? And and I'm asking that legitimately. Like I said, I'm not being flip. I mean, is that a problem or or? I I guess I just don't understand why it would cause a problem.
So. So the procedure, are you, the way you've kind of put it now, a ground-mounted is pretty much as easy to put in as a as a, as a roof-mounted, right?
Yeah, that's, I think, why we're saying, what's the difference?
Okay, so probably it doesn't matter at this point then, right? At one point when in this process, it it, yeah, it would matter, but I guess at this point it probably doesn't. But you still, it still should define what a carport is just for the heck, in the definition section of the of the bylaw. Something I've said for quite a while is we just haven't done that and it should be done.
I just want to confirm that that's the um, we changed it so that a so you don't need the even the administrative EIDR for ground mount if it's under the size. Right, so there's no, there's no difference between um, a solar panels on a garage or solar panels on a carport or solar panels in your yard. Um, you know, over something else, as long as it's the size, right?
Um, no, um, we have um, administrative EIDR review for if they're not on the structure. Um, I can pull that up if you like.
Yes.
Pull up the definition.
So that's what the um, that, so there is a distinction then, like it makes a difference if you're if you're doing the carport and it is, how do you tell the difference between a carport and a ground-mounted solar that you have a car under? And if you have to go through, if you have to do administrative EIDR, I mean, it's just, it's another step, so.
I I remember having discussion, uh, talking about if the roof of a structure is a roof or if it is in fact the solar panels themselves, because I think we were talking about the new parking area at the Brigham, the new structure, and at the top of it, um, would they be allowed to put in solar panels? Um, I can't remember exactly how that discussion played out. But I remember identifying that where the uh, the solar panels themselves were the roof. In the case of a carport, they would be attached to a roof. Uh, I mean, I think it I'm I'm sorry, in my mind, I'm playing this out. If it's not attached to a roof, then it's ground-mounted. If it's attached to a roof, then it's a carport or it's another structure, if there is a roof. And maybe, maybe I'm playing this out poorly in my mind, um, but that's how I distinguish the two. There's no roof that it's attached to, then it's a ground-mounted.
Might help to look at the the current the current draft here. After your last meeting, Abby made some revisions to remove the term ground-mounted solar. So now there are three types of solar that would be covered by this. Roof-mounted solar and other solar are the two types, and then large-scale solar is a new definition that's added for anything over ten thousand square feet. So it's either on a roof or it's other than on a roof. Those are really the the two main types of solar. And in the case of other, if it's over ten thousand square feet, now it falls under large-scale solar. So it's it's um, the way the current draft is written, there is no such thing as ground-mounted, that that's no different whether it's on the ground or whether it's on another structure.
So the only way you get, um, you can install solar with a building permit and electrical permit is if it's attached to a roof of the structure.
That's right.
So.
And then, and then for other solar, which is an accessory use, then you just have the administrative review. For other solar, that's a principal use, and for large-scale solar, then you go through a planning board review.
Right, okay.
Yeah, so there is a difference. It's the, it's the administrative review, which is not too tedious, but it still makes a difference.
Yeah, so I, a- a- as we said, if it, if it's, if they construct a carport with a roof and they put this upon it, it's no different than building, I know I get your earlier point, we don't have a definition for it, but as long as the structure has a roof and they want to put solar panels on it, then it it's a simple building proceed, building uh, permit and electrical permit. But if there is no roof for it to be attached to, and they make a roof of just solar panels, then it becomes other solar and there is administrative review for that.
Right, and I think, I think there would be some obje- objection to that. That someone is creating, they're building a, they're building a uh, carport which happens to have solar panels as its roof, and therefore it should be treated as roof-mounted, not as other.
But by def, it's, it's right there. It's not roof-mounted. It it is, there is no roof. So based on our definition, I I don't think there's much grounds for an argument there.
You you think it would become other solar?
Yeah, if it's not roof mounted, if it's not mounted or attached to a roof, it's other. But it's
Well, you're a structure, so I mean, it's like, it's the um, I mean, what would, what would it be to get a permit to do a carport? You know, what is, how does that work? It's not defined, but so if you had a pre-existing structure and if you, and if a carport is considered a structure, then it's roof-mounted solar because of it's on top of a structure.
Right, and then if it, if it didn't have, um, if it didn't have a roof, it would be other solar, so like the structures that you see at the EverSource um, building, that would be considered other solar. But that, because of that size, that would be considered large-scale, but if you were doing a s- a smaller project, because it, those are over the, you know, the ones at the EverSource property on Station Drive, they're over the cars, but it's the solar and then it's mounted on a structure into the ground, so that would be considered other solar. But most carports exist without, you know, if it's a true carport, it's an existence without the solar, so it usually does have some sort of roof canopy.
I mean, I think this, I think this kind of gets back to the fundamental issue of um, you know, why would solar be different? You know, why, just because there's solar panels involved? Why is there a need for it to be treated differently? If someone is allowed to build a structure in their yard, if they just need a building permit, or maybe they don't need anything, if they want to build a um, you know, some kind of a shelter in their yard that's all open and just has a roof on it, isn't if they can do that, then they can put solar panels on it. It shouldn't be special just because it's got solar panels on it. So I think that would go to the carport. Would anyone need a special permit to have a carport? I don't think so. So then that's a structure and you can just put solar panels on it.
It would still have to follow setbacks to be.
But it wouldn't, there would be no special extra requirement because of the solar panels being on it.
I'm I'm not, sorry, I'm not, I'm not following what you're, what you're saying there.
Oh, I'm saying that um, so if we, if, well, we've written here for a um, uh, roof-mounted solar, it's it's on the roof, which is easy to understand of a structure. So the house is a structure, the garage is a structure, detached garage is a structure, a shed in the backyard is a structure. Wouldn't a carport also just be another structure in, that has a roof on it and therefore it all falls under roof-mounted solar?
Yes, sorry, if I didn't grasp that before. I I agree with you, but the construction of each of those structures, um, maybe not smaller sheds, but I think they all have setback requirements, don't they? Each of those structures that you just enumerated.
The same, I would expect the same, you know, rules would apply, like you couldn't you, it's the same building permit requirements would apply to any structure you're going to build.
Yeah, but even if you, I I'm not even certain a carport needs a building uh, permit, but if it, if it doesn't, I believe you still need to be so far away from your neighbor's property. Uh, I don't believe you can put that right on the property line and then think you can put uh, solar panels on top of that. I I believe there's somewhere that that's prohibited, right, Abby?
Right, we, in here, we uh, refer to the um, setbacks for accessory accessory structures. So a carport would be an accessory um, structure if it's not attached to anything. And it would only, if solar was proposed on a carport, it would only need the building and electrical permits.
Right, and and the setback issue was already decided when the carport was constructed. So we've, we've already moved it away from the property line in the construction of the carport.
Yeah, and anything like even a fence, right? I mean, that's, you get into this if you have a fence higher than um, is it seven feet now?
Yeah.
Then that's, that's, it's not that it's prohibited, but it becomes a, an accessory structure, and so the setback applies. You can't have a eight-foot ho- tall fence on your property line, so you couldn't have anything that's if it, if that's larger that that violates that outside the setback.
Was that for Abby? Were you looking for confirmation from Abby or? Sorry.
Yeah, I'm just saying, do we need to, um, I think that it's, I think you you're concerned, yes, so that we don't want to we're not trying to create some new loophole or something, um, but I think that the idea of a carport is covered um, by the existing setback requirements, and so it's just any other structure. You know, if you want to put solar panels over a backyard pool, you know, or the pool cover somehow, and they have, you know, right, that would just be the same, whatever the requirements are for the pool. And then I shouldn't have said that, because now that doesn't seem at all like a roof, but it's just the top of a structure, so.
Yes, Alan.
So I guess I was thinking of the way that we were looking at what's written there, roof or top, that the or-top would qualify if the solar panels are the roof, but reading it again, I'm I'm not sure that that's true, because if the solar panels are the roof, they are potentially going to project beyond the eaves ridge or sides, because that's what I would do eh, on the carport to have overhang. So if I'm understanding the distinction we're trying to make, it's a question of if I read the bylaw as written now, if the solar panels were on the roof of a carport, it would not need an administrative review. If the solar panels are the roof of the carport, it would need an administrative review. Is that correct? And I think, is that what's, is that what Mr. Olenoff is objecting to?
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to say. Yes, you got it.
Thank you. I and now I understand now. I wasn't, I wasn't clear on that before. Okay, um, and then I guess my next question is, should it be that way? And I think that's what Dave was, if if I'm understanding what Dave was asking too, is if the solar panels are the roof for what is otherwise a structure like a carport and not necessarily meant to be a freestanding ground-mounted solar or other solar, should it need to go through the administrative review? Is that the question that's now that that Mr. Olenoff is asking us to think about?
No, I I think we're saying if it's other, so if there's no roof for it to be attached to, then it's other and that gets administrative review. So if they try uh, try to make a carport that doesn't have a roof, but they're going to use their solar panels as a roof, it's not mounted to a roof.
Right.
So it's other. And setback has been taken care of.
Right, and and I get that. I I understand, I think, but what Steve was saying is that he doesn't think that should be the Steve was saying is that he doesn't think that should be the case, that if you're doing a carport where the roof is made of solar panels and there is no underlying roof structure, that because it's a carport, it shouldn't have to go through the administrative review. I'm just trying to make sure I understand the point that Mr. Olunoff is trying to make. I, I don't know whether or not we want to change what we've already agreed on. I think it's probably okay, but I, I'm just want to make sure I understand what Mr. Olunoff is trying to convey.
Yes, th- there would be some people who would be building something like that, and they would say, why do I have to go through an administrative review? Because it's just a carport. To them, it's a carport that, and, and they're trying to save costs by not putting in a complete roof, but using the uh, solar panels as to serve as their roof. And so why should they have to go through an administrative review for, for that? And, and the, the problem comes because you haven't really defined what a carport is.
I, I, you know, I would recommend keeping it the way it is. I think a true carport that you see at a residential property has a roof, and the and so this will go right to building, you know, the building and electrical permits. The other solar is intended where it's a really, it's designed to look like a, you know, it, it, it looks like this solar. It's, it's not, it's not, I, it's not just a carport. You can tell it's a solar array. And so the idea with this proposal was that it would need at least a some administrative EIDR, EIDR, EIDR review. It's, that's not um, an overly cumbersome process. It's an application to the town planner. Once an application is submitted, it has to be approved within twenty days. It's the same, you know, material that you would submit to the billing permit. Um, so it's usually submitted and approved, you know, within one to two weeks. It's not a heavy process.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm not objecting to that, because honestly, in my head, when I think solar panels on the roof of a carport, that is a very different visual for me than when I think of something that would be carport where the solar panel is the roof, I think more of like the installations we see in a parking lot, the canopy. And, and I may be wrong on that, but to me, that is something very different. Um, but I just wanted to make sure I was understanding what the potential objection was to what we had already written.
They, they may in fact actually look exactly the same, uh, depending on how they're built. But in, in any case, I, I think we just, maybe you should go ahead and just try this, see if you have come up with this problem. But in any case, I think uh, zoning uh, bylaw is lacking because it doesn't define carport. And in other areas, it raises confusion, like how many garage, garages you have. You know, does a, does a carport count as a garage when they, uh, so it should be fixed. It's why, at some time or other, and I've asked for it to be fixed before. I think it's, it's overdue to clear up that confusion.
Yes, Mr. Hurry.
Well, as I look at this, and maybe I'm wrong, but a carport is simply a ground mounted solar facility that's up higher that allows a gr- allows a car to get under it.
Okay, uh.
And ground mounted are eh, are now classified as other and by right. So if I'm, if I'm representing a developer who wants to put one, or homeowner wants to put one of these in, I'd apply for a ground mounted, apply enough to allow a car to get under it.
Are, but are you saying that that would be a by right, or you'd be administrative review? I mean, they're both by right, but have to go through the administrative process.
But that, that administrative review process is isn't, as Abby just said, is not a heavy lift.
Yeah, yeah, if you're going to the trouble and expense of installing enough to make a car eh, covered area, then whatever we are, you know, asking them to go through is fairly, you know, nonexistent.
Correct.
But, yeah. I, 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 I feel like we're finding a solution for eh, a problem that's not there. I, I think the market will take care of this. They, it'd be, I, I don't know. I, I just, why would you do that? You would, you would, you'd create like a gable all the way across and you're only catching half the amount of sun. They all need to be kind of facing the same area. Maybe it would be like a, like a salt box or a different uh, lean to look. Um, but I, I don't think it would optimize your eh, your uh, your solar uh, retention. But I, I can't see how, I, I can see how technically they might try to get in, but I still don't see an advantage to trying to do it that way. Um, okay, I don't see any other questions, no other hands raised and nothing in the Q and A for Article Two, the solar. Um, I think people have had ample time to raise their hand if they wanted to weigh in on this subject. Uh, any other last comments, board members, about what we've been talking about, solar? Okay, uh, Abby, take us to Article Three, please. You're muted.
Article Three is the rezoning for the High Street properties, the nine oh nine High Street, um, for the flexible multiple use and local business aid district. Um, over those um, couple High Street properties. The only change um, in your packet since the last meeting was to add a different definition for animal clinic or hospital and as an allowable use in the FM UOD seven.
All right, thank you. Comments from board members? On the change that Abby just described to what we talked about, to include essentially animal services, veterinary services? Okay, um, don't see any comments in the Q and A. No one has raised their hand. So, um, Abby, we have, I think we'll go back after we've talked, since we're halfway through, and then we'll do a, take a vote on each article.
Okay.
Since we've kind of moved on without doing that to start. Okay, um, let's go to Article Four, please.
Article Four was the um, changes to the um, expansion of a non, non-conforming structures. Um, no changes, we haven't made any changes, um, that came out of your last hearing. Um, again, this one is allowing some flexibility for minor changes that deemed to be minor by the building commissioner. They could be um, a special permit, public hearing process with the zoning board of appeals. If they're um, not considered minor, they would continue with the variance application process with the zoning board of appeals. So both um, both of these permits are with the zoning board of appeals, the public hearing process. But for minor alterations to non-conforming structures, the change here would be that for minor ones, they could be considered as a special permit rather than a variance.
Okay. Questions or comments from board members? All right, I don't see any. Um, see nobody with their hand raised in the attendees, and I don't see any additions to the Q and A. Just give them five more seconds to raise their hand or type a question, and we'll move on. All right, uh, Abby, you can take us to number five, please.
Okay, Article Five was the rezoning on the, the map change for the Providence Highways properties, that's three ninety-four and three ninety-six Providence Highway to change from industrial office to highway business. Um, this would allow the um, light motor vehicle use as a um, compliant and conforming use at both of these um, properties.
Hey, everyone remember this one by the Shell Station? Any comments from board members, questions for Abby? All right, um, none of the attendees are raising their hand or typing in questions. I'll give them five more seconds to do that. Okay. Seeing none, Abby is, move on to number six, please.
Okay, and your last zoning article is a housekeeping article. This is where we've um, put in anything that's non, you know, correcting errors, typos, clarifying sections of the zoning bylaw. Um, so we've found a few over the last couple of weeks. Um, the only new one since your last meeting was um, to add the State Department that was referenced in one of our definitions for personal kennel.
Okay, any questions from board members for Abby on this? Or comments? All right, um, none of the attendees have their hands raised, and there are no more questions added to the Q and A. Just wait a few more seconds. Give everyone a chance. Okay, I see no additions. Um, so that's it, right, Abby? It's all six? Okay, so now we need to vote on our recommendations for each of these six. Um, and whether or not we proceed on to uh, FinCom, right? To endorse this. So let's go back to Article One.
Could I, um, could I make a motion that we approve them all? I mean, to list them all, but can I just move that we do the same thing for all of them?
Do you mean take one vote?
Yes.
Um, I understand the expediency behind that, but if somebody is against number four, say, and, but there are four all the others, then they don't, it won't really help the process.
All right.
I, I appreciate that, I just, I, I'd like, I'd like to be clear. Um, I'll, I'll rattle through the roll call very quickly. Um, so I, you can make the motion, see if there's a second. I don't, I didn't mean to cut you off, I apologize, but.
No, it's all right, I, it's, I'm just trying to think of a way to. So I'll make a motion that we recommend favorable action by the Finance and Warrant Commission on Article One, which is the mixed use and multifamily overlay district.
Second.
Any further discussion? Ro- yes, Abby?
I just, I just want to point out, do you want to remove that section that references um, Washington Street design? Usually we have that um, the section that Steve had pointed out, usually that's for when you're reviewing a project on Washington Street.
Uh, I, I'm sorry, I'm not following what section.
Yeah. Sorry. There was um, you know, a copied section from REIDR section of the bylaw that references compatibility with adjacent buildings if you're on High Street or Washington Street, and we had copied that language in here. If you want, you can remove that, because it's not relevant to this district anymore, if you want.
Um, board members?
Yeah, friendly amendment that we, that we remove that, thank you.
Okay. If it's, yeah, the superfluous, then I I agree.
Oh, oh, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes.
Who made the motion to approve Article One? Was it you, Dave?
Yes.
So Dave, will you adopt Ms. Wynn's amendment to that motion?
I do, yes.
Okay, and then if someone would second that, you can consider it that way.
Second.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second uh, with an amended uh, article as uh, outlined by Ms. McCabe. Any further discussion? All right, we do a roll call vote. Ellen?
Hi.
Dave?
Hi.
Kate?
Hi.
I vote aye also.
I'll make a motion that we recommend favorable action by the Finance and Warrant Commission on Article Two, which is permitting for solar arrays as submitted.
Second.
Any motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, do a roll call vote. Kate?
Aye.
Ellen?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
I'm an aye also. Article Three?
I move that we recommend favorable action by the Finance and Warrant Commission on Article Three, the High Street FMUOD as submitted.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Uh, roll call vote. Dave?
Aye.
Ellen?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
I vote aye.
I move that we recommend favorable action by the Finance and Warrant Commission on Article Four, which is the expansion of non-conforming structures as submitted.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Kate?
Aye.
Ellen?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
I vote aye.
Right, I'm, I make a motion to recommend favorable action by the Finance and Warrant Commission on Article Five, which is the rezoning at three ninety-four and three ninety-six Providence Highway.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Dave?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Ellen?
Aye.
I vote aye also.
And I move that we recommend favorable action by the Finance and Warrant Commission on Article Six, housekeeping amendments as submitted.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Ellen?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
I vote aye. All right. Um, Jessica, you're mo- motioning something. You're, you're muted if you're speaking.
I was just gonna say you're gonna continue it.
All right.
But, that's Abby's line.
Thank you.
I move, I move that we continue the public hearing for zoning amendments to Tuesday, March first at six P M on Zoom.
Second.
Any further discussion? Continuance?
Point of clarification, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Dave, is that, um, you're moving to uh, continue it to the FinCom hearing, is that not correct?
Yeah, I was gonna, yeah, I was just reading the, here, but we want to move that, that, to clarify, that is the FinCom hearing on Tuesday, March first at six P M on Zoom. Um, do we know?
Is that a planning board hearing as well?
Yes, we'll um, post it as a full planning board meeting where you will um, participate in the FinComs hearing. So it'll be the same night, but you'll have your own separate hearings, but you'll be able to take in all the information from the FinCom meeting. And it'll be important on March first, before the planning board leaves the Zoom, um, that you vote that night to continue it to your March eighth meeting. If, don't let, let's not leave without forgetting to do that on March first.
All right, we had a motion, was it a proper motion, Pat, to continue this?
I believe it was, yes. Now that it's been clarified.
I'm a second of that clarified motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I'll take a roll call vote. Kate?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Ellen?
Aye.
I vote aye. All right. One down. Um, the next item on the agenda, as Abby pointed out, uh, has been withdrawn, the what, two ninety-eight Washington Street Islington Center modification. So if you're here for that in the attendees, uh, it has been withdrawn by the applicant, so we will not be talking about that tonight. Uh, next we have comments on D H C D draft compliance guidelines.
Right, um, so thank you, Kate and Ellen attended um, the meeting last week. Um, staff presented um, the draft guidelines and the the updates to the state zoning law about the requirements for the multifamily housing with the select board. We did that presentation last week on February seventh. The select board is working on submitting their own comment letter to submit to the state. Um, com- the state is accepting comments on the draft guidelines until March thirty-first. So I have a very, I had a rough draft in your packet for, for tonight. If you've had a chance to read it, I know it, it's still in rough shape, I was kind of just writing down the, you know, major ideas. So the plan, you know, planning board members, if you want to provide any comments tonight or after this meeting, um, individually, if you want to send me um, comments to make it stronger, I can put together further revised um, draft comment letter for you to review at your next meeting um, on March eighth. And on March eighth, if you're ready, we could review an updated draft, get that submitted to the state before the March thirty-first deadline. The, the major points, who I think were the um, designation of the transit category from a bus community to a community real community. designation of the transit category from a bus community to a community rail community, the, which would change the overall size requirements. You know, the reasonable size of the district, also the timing on compliance.
You mean the timing? I'm sorry, go ahead, Dave.
I just had a, a comment on that. So I agree with, the memo is, is good. I, I think it might overstate the distinction though with the bus line. So I just, I think you have, it says that the commuter rail stations attract approximately XX residents while the bus line has less ridership. Train services run more frequently and provide more mobility choices. I mean, the buses every 20 minutes, then there's only like six trains at Islington and you know, 128 has a lot more activity. But I just think, you know, you might want to, I don't know what the real numbers are on that, but that might be overstating it a little bit. Because the 34 is a pretty significant bus line and, you know, it's, it's often the only option when, you know, it's two or three hours between trains.
Okay, all right, thank you, yes. Needed to look that up, so I, thank you for that.
Good comment, thank you. Ellen?
Yes, one thing that I know I've been kind of harping on and, and obviously this is from all of us, so, you know, it's, it's up to all of us whether or not we add this, but I feel that it would be important to add a note about the disconnect within the guidelines between the statement at the very beginning that this is not, there's no metric they're measuring us, you know, they're not requiring X number of units to be built by X number of years. We just have to zone for it. And then I believe it's like the very last paragraph where they kind of comment that compliance is conditional and temporary. You're compliant, you're, if we're deemed compliant, it'll be for a decade. And then they're going to reevaluate us. One of the criteria that they'll reevaluate is what has been built over those 10 years in the areas that you've zoned. To me, reading that, it can't be both. It's, it's, what is it? Like, what, what is the real expectation? What is the measurement? Because I think that does help. Because we're not just looking at this for tomorrow or next week. You know, if this really is a 10-year process where they're going to be evaluating communities on what kind of progress, if any, we make once we've, if, if, you know, this passes town meeting or if anything passes town meeting. There's a disconnect for me in the guidelines between, we just want you to zone for it. And by the way, we're going to check up on you in 10 years and see how your, your community has done. The implication is they don't expect us to, you know, necessarily court development. But if we, if we don't have anything that's built, I, I wonder if they're going to say that the way that we've zoned is flawed. And that's, it's, I feel like there's some, there's messages coming out of both sides of the guidelines mouth. And that's problematic for me when I read this to think about how to proceed. So I, I don't know exactly how to word that in our public comments, but I, I think it would be helpful if the state could kind of land on one side or the other of that dichotomy, because I think that would help us when we're moving forward to guide how we approach where we zone this. It's a little conflicted right now. So that to me is, is kind of pressing as far as something that they should clarify and not kind of sneak in the, yeah, by the way, this compliance is conditional in the very last paragraph of these guidelines. And I don't know if the rest of you feel that that is something that, that we should call out, but it did jump out to me as, as problematic.
Yeah, I, I, I would agree with you. I, I do want to be sensitive to Dave's earlier point about overstating. I, I don't want to be heavy-handed in our criticism of, of what they've done, but at the same time, it shouldn't go unnoticed that they are kind of conflicting themselves, you're contradicting themselves. So I guess I'm in agreeance with you. I, if there's a gentle way to put how they've messed this up, then I would like to do that. I would like to include that in, in our statement back to them. But I also, it's funny, they're speaking out of both the sides of their mouth. I think we've honored the spirit and the letter of what they've put, handed down to us as a law. The location on Everett Street, I think honors the spirit. Something can get built there. And at University Ave, I believe we've honored the, the letter of the law. Now, the 50 acres, 25 being contiguous, that's a different issue that's come up, but I think as as contradictory as their statement is, I think we've actually honored both sides of it. So I think our, our position is defendable here is what we're trying to do. They've got us playing Twister, basically, trying to, trying to put our hands on every available dot. So it's, it's difficult, but I do, I do believe with our process and how we're going forward. So I, I would agree with your comment.
Thank you. Sorry, didn't mean to start. Just to, you, you made me think to your point, like, I guess maybe to not harp on that it's contradictory with that, but maybe to, and Abby, I think you can be far more sensitive than I would, but I guess what's problematic for me is they say we're, we're going to evaluate you, but they're not really forthcoming with what those benchmarks are going to be. It's all very vague. So I, I think perhaps maybe asking them to be a bit more specific in, well, what are specifically, you know, what, can you give us a little bit more guidance on what are you going to be looking at in a decade rather than just, we're going to take a peek and see if anything happened in your community? Yeah, I think that would be helpful for us and maybe, maybe the feedback can be kind of guided in that direction that, you know, providing some more specifics on that would be helpful.
If I had to guess, unfortunately, I'd say based on the past 13 months, they're not going to know what's going to happen 10 years from now. So I don't, I don't, I wouldn't expect too much guidance 10 years out, but I, your point is well taken.
You know, while I understand and hear you about wanting to be reasonable in your comments, and that's not a reasonable thing to do. I'm not sure Brandeis could write a reasonable letter dealing with some of the conflicts that you've discussed openly in some of your meetings. It's challenging. And, and Ms. Rawlings, the comment you made about we're going to reevaluate you in 10 years certainly has a big brother feel to it that I don't think any well-managed town would, would or should appreciate. So I think, I think it's okay to want to be sensitive, but I think you still got to get the ink down on what you want to say and what you're concerned with. And you can always tone it down. You can't, it's hard to tone stuff up as you draft. At least I find it is. So that's my only advice.
Thank you. Yes, Dave?
Probably, this might have been better for the earlier discussion, but actually it occurred to me like, I mean, can we ask them to, can we make the zoning contingent upon certification by the state? So in other words, we say, here is our best effort. And it will take effect if the state certifies it as meeting the requirements of this. Because otherwise you are kind of in a strange situation, right? If they say, it's great that you did this, it's not good enough. And then, you know, but it's, but you've done something and now you have to do something else and else and else, right? I mean, wouldn't it be reasonable to expect that they could, they could evaluate it and say, okay, you pass. Instead of like some saying, coming back in 10 years, like, we don't have control over what happens in the next 10 years, you know, all we can do is set the, the, you know, the, the rules, the zoning. So that's, that's crazy to say, you know, come back in 10 years and they say, well, Westwood doesn't have 1,500 new apartments and so you, you're in trouble. It's like, well, you know, that's ridiculous.
So I think that the answer to your question, Dave, is I, I think there'll be two levels of review. The Attorney General reviews all zoning articles. I'm not sure if the Attorney General is going to enforce the, and it's not clear to me yet if they're going to enforce the size requirements or what the transit efficiency is. That may come from DHCD. So I'm not sure you can, you, you can pass a zoning article contingent upon approval. It's always contingent upon approval from the Attorney General, whether or not you meet the requirements of DHCD. I don't know if you can do that, but I've got a seminar tomorrow. Maybe I'll ask the question and see if we can, but I, I, I just have a hard time visualizing how to do it, but I don't think you're wrong in your request.
All right. Sorry, lost track of where we, where we were on this discussion.
It's going to end up.
Yeah, I just, thanks, Dave. I, I did just want to say, I think, Dave, that's my favorite question so far, is, I, I just, I really love the idea of making it contingent. Like, if, if you're saying, if you're saying, yes, we're good, then we'll be good. You know, covered, but, but if you're going to keep moving the goalposts, you know, why, why are we playing? Like, you know, if we don't know how long this is going to take. So I appreciate that. And, and Ellen, I do appreciate it's the same question, you know, how long is the game? Right? Where are the goalposts? How long is the game? And we don't really know. So, so I think it's important that we're showing good faith. We're in, we're here, we're playing, but where is the goalpost and how long is the game? Those are, those are basic questions. And, and I appreciate the way you both put them.
Okay. I've honestly totally forgotten how we got on this discussion and where we are in our.
I say, Abby, you're gonna, you're gonna have this draft again at the next meeting. So I think we were just.
That's what I thought. Thank you. Triggering my mind. Yeah, I don't think we're ready to send it in. But I think given the discussion and comments tonight, read the draft again over the next two weeks till our, will we discuss this during our meeting at the FinCom date or will we wait till the eighth?
Wait till the eighth. So you have, you know, three weeks from tonight. So if you want to, you know, maybe in two weeks' time, get me any comments, reread this, please let me know if you have any other further comments and I'll provide an updated draft in your packet for the March eighth meeting.
Okay. All right. So we're moving on to other business? Is that where we are? All right. I see review of draft meeting minutes as the first item of other business. I've had an opportunity to read it. I saw no reason for comment or editorials. Have every, anyone else had opportunity? Anyone would like to make a motion to accept the draft minutes for 11222? Is that, is that the right date? I apologize. What is the date? Twenty-two. Looking at the wrong. So I'd like to make a motion to accept the meeting minutes or if anyone like to make comments to make changes?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion. Let me make the motion. I'll make a motion to accept the draft minutes of February 1st, 2022.
As written?
As written.
Second.
Any further discussion on the draft meeting minutes? All right, roll call vote. Ellen?
Aye.
Dave?
Hi.
Kate?
Hi.
I vote aye also. So the meeting minutes are accepted. Next, we have the peer review decision. I hope everyone has had an opportunity to review the two that we had received, one from PSC and the other from Beta Group. The prices were very similar. 11,000 and 11,850, are those the numbers, Abby? And I did see a little bit difference in scope and I had a, a question or two about it. PSC indicated that they were under the understanding there was no traffic review required, that it would be waived, that requirement be waived. I didn't see where that was the case and Beta went through and listed what they would do for traffic review. Why did PSC?
Okay, um, sorry, I didn't see that in the scope probably because, you know, we don't have the full application yet. I had only provided what we have. And so there is no, there is no traffic study in what, what we have so far. So I, I did let them both know that the application has not formally been submitted yet. It's an estimate based on the preliminary plans. The applicant still is working on the formal submission. For the new members, the planning board usually when you have an application for new construction, you hire a peer reviewer. I put out a cost, you know, a request for a peer review consultant to several different places. And usually the board picks, picks on a case-by-case basis. In this case, I just wanted to get started early. We know this is coming. I don't know exactly when on the timing. The applicant, you know, Mr. Sullivan's working to get an application submitted. We're not sure if it's going to be at what time this spring. Probably, you know, this spring or very early summer. So they, so, so he just didn't have, you know, he just didn't have a traffic report in what was provided.
I know, but it indicated that we were waiving the traffic requirement in his submission of his proposal. So that's why I was, I, I didn't know where that came up. That we would be waiving traffic studies.
Right, I mean, they just, it's never known until you actually have a hearing and you vote on the waiver request. So he, he's probably just operating on what was provided to him. In this case, there was no traffic study provided at this time.
Okay, and I did, and so, I, I, just to reiterate, this is to be paid for by the applicant, but they are representing the town's viewpoint. So just for those new to the process, if you haven't been part of this yet. I did note that I think Beta was allowing for one more meeting. I think they allowed for four and PSC was three. If I'm wrong there, please somebody correct me, but I was just noting the differences in the proposals. But if, and Beta was the 11,850, right?
Yes.
And if PSC comes to a fourth meeting, they add 600 some odd dollars. So then they draw even closer price. So any comments? Oh, Abby, I was going to ask you. We haven't had a peer review consultant since COVID started building as much less. So who was the last one we hired?
Right, so the last, the last peer review you had for new construction was about a year ago, a little over or a little less than a year ago was last March, April. You hired PSC for the mobile station on High, High Street. The construction hasn't started, but if you remember that project, it was combining the two, the gas stations into one new service station. So that was PSC. The last time before that was 215 High Street. That was in the fall of 2019. That was also PSC. That project didn't ultimately go forward, but PSC was your last peer review consultant for the last two new projects.
Okay, thanks. Any other comments, thoughts by board members before we take a vote on who we would hire? Unfortunately, we have an even number tonight to vote on this, but thoughts from board members? If none, we can go right to a vote, if you like. I guess my only, my gut is, given Abby has said that we hired PSC the last two times, just in the interest of spreading it out, I would, I guess, consider Beta. I think both do an excellent job. I, I don't think we're going to get shortchanged either way. We're looking for the applicant to spend pretty much the same amount of money. So if it's me, I'm thinking Beta just for that reason alone.
I, I would, I agree with that. I would support picking Beta.
I would as well, for the same reason.
Agreed.
Okay, Pat, does that qualify as voting? You gotta take a vote? You get a motion? Or do we just take a vote?
Motion in a second.
All right.
Motion to select Beta as the peer reviewer for the potential project restoration and repurposing of the Obed Baker House.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, we'll take a roll call vote. Ellen?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
I vote aye also. All right.
Much cleaner, Mr. Chairman.
Getting there. Um, okay, I think that's it, right, Abby? Any other business we need to attend to or discuss? No? All right, um, just reminding everyone, we are all expected to attend on the first um at six o'clock, not seven. Um, and then we'll meet the next week on the eighth at our usual time at seven. So uh, I guess we could have a motion to adjourn.
I moved.
Second.
Any more discussion? Dave?
Aye.
Ellen?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
I vote aye also. We're adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone, for your work. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Night, everybody.
Night.